Good to go. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second work session for the 2026 budget. We have four items on the agenda this evening, and we will go through them. But first, we have limited courtesy of the floor. I believe we've had no requests this evening. So we will move on to item number two, which starts with the Office of Community Development. And again, please state the page numbers that you're going to be on so we can quickly turn to that in our budget books. Thank you.
Page forty-six. Okay. Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss my 2026 budget for the Department of Community and Economic Development. As Mayor Slaughter mentioned in his opening remarks for the budget, community and economic development had a really great 2025. He shared some of our, you know, most proud initiatives. I'll just run down a few items for you here while we're waiting for Councilwoman Mealy to arrive. We streamlined our LERTA process. We worked through the pilot program for bike lanes that we had discussed at last year's budget session that we were hopeful that we can incorporate this year. We worked with the Williamsport Business Association for a downtown strategic plan. We received a Birdtown designation. We rewrote our home program policies and procedures. We relaunched our city's emergency rehab program. We have four homes currently enrolled in that program. We're really happy to be helping those homeowners. We are working on a strategic plan for expanding our housing initiatives. And we had a really great intern this summer who helped us with a GIS needs study and a comprehensive report on Graffiti's Run, as well as helped us to analyze some other future planning opportunities. One of the other things that happened this year was we put together a draft strategic plan for the department. So one of the things that was very clear to me when I was at this podium and you were voting on whether or not to put me into this position as director of this department was you did not want the Department of Community and Economic Development to just be simply managing the dwindling HUD entitlement was, I think, the exact words of Councilwoman Mealy. So I'm really proud to stand here in front of you tonight and say, just in my first year of being here, I think that we have really laid the groundwork to not be the department and it is just managing that HUD entitlement while we are still doing that. And that is a still really important piece of work that we're doing, and we're really proud of those housing programs and our community has a great need for them. It's just a small piece of the work that we're doing. So we put together a strategic plan that involves, you know, bike safety, pedestrian safety, housing studies, comprehensive need studies across the city. And we've been really deliberate about investing in really knowledgeable staff that has the expertise that this department needed to become, you know, what's going to drive community and economic development for the city of Williamsport. So I'm really proud of that. I'm really proud of the group that we have together and the work that we're doing. So that brings us to our 2026 budget where you'll see on page forty-six, we have a 7.47% increase of $35,909, and a majority of that is represented in the salary line. The rest is pretty self-explanatory. I know the other departments were already up at the previous session and had already discussed the increase in things like City Hall operating allocation, pensions, health insurance, those types of things. We do have in here a subscription for Adobe, which is a service that we very much need to do our day-to-day work, and then also the GIS software that was also mentioned in the session earlier this week. Questions that I can answer?
Eric, this is Bonnie. The question I have, I mean, it's amazing everything that you're doing and really think it's great. Is anything on Park Avenue in the scope of things? Because we did have a study that was done on Park Avenue.
Yeah, the Park Avenue study is still out there. Park Avenue will definitely, definitely be included in all of the studies that we're doing. So not only the comprehensive, you know, pedestrian safety study that we're doing, but definitely the housing study. It'll probably be a big piece of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any, have we had any conversations with UPMC about any land that could be developed down there? Because time to time, there's suggestions that they're willing to to sell off some of that, or, you know?
That's a great question, Randy. We have not yet had any of those conversations, but that's definitely in the future plans.
Okay, I think it might be an avenue where we could have housing and, you know, maybe some other options.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Val, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, no, I just wanted, again, well, not again, but I do want to thank you for the work that you've been doing. It's been pretty amazing. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll give, to give Councilwoman Mealy a little more time to get here, could you maybe just briefly explain for the six people that are watching at home?
Sure.
What this GIS software will give us the capability to do, the things, the benefits that we could see from it and will see from it. And then maybe give us kind of a 30,000-foot overview of what kind of things you have lined up for 2026.
Sure, yeah, I would be happy to do that. So really, the GIS software is a tool that we'll use to create maps and do sophisticated data assessment. That's basically what we'll do with that. So Councilwoman Mealy had talked in the last meeting, and we've talked as a department a lot about in our community and economic development strategy, we have a lot of ideas about what we should be doing. I'm sure everyone in the room has a lot of ideas about what we should be doing, but we should really be collecting the data that we need in order to determine where we should be making strategic investments, right? So it's our goal to collect the codes data, the fire data, the police data, have all this data and be looking at neighborhoods and trying to determine why are these neighborhoods underperforming? Maybe why aren't people wanting to move into the section of the city? You know, why, 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 why? Also having conversations with bigger entities, large companies, you know, UPMC, Lake Homing Engines, some of the big ones in our community and talking to them and asking them, you know, what are you hearing when you are hiring someone, when your HR people are hiring maybe a doctor who's moving from here and why are they making a decision to, you know, move to Loyal SOC instead of moving to Williamsport? So we can make assumptions about why those things are happening, but we really want to have the data to look at and say, here, this makes sense, right? There's 50% of the police calls are happening in this census tract, you know, those types of things. We really want to kind of layer all of that data, you know, on top and be able to come up with a really good plan for how we're going to invest in our community. And then as far as what we're going to do in 2026, that's also a great question. So we put together a draft strategic plan. And so our first kind of step one for 2025 and 2026 is to finish our park and rec plan, right? So that's something that was funded by DCNR. We're very close to finishing it, but we have some final work that we need to do. Put together our comprehensive road safety action plan, the Safe Streets for All, do our housing needs study, come up with this downtown strategic plan by working with the Williamsport Business Association, and then have a rebranding. So that's really our goal for 2026 is to get all of those studies to where they need to be so that we can go into step two, which is coming up with, you know, a plan to review some of the city ordinances and permits to figure out like a broader analysis of the barriers to community and economic development, doing our housing strategic plan, putting together a marketing and promotional plan to try to attract visitors and retain residents and businesses, and then really look at land use analysis, like a full zoning ordinance rewrite, new zoning maps, and then look at capital improvement plans and see how that we can work with our grants administrator to tie into, get funding to do all those things. And then step three is to have a really good prioritized list of projects and initiatives that we want to implement.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Could I, again, I know you can only go after so many grants as part of, I think we're heading in the right direction, obviously, with our parks. Even, that's probably an understatement. But, you know, at Elm, there will be restrooms there.
Yes.
I would like to see that groundwork start to be laid to get restrooms in every park.
Sure.
As well as lighting where things are happening.
Right.
Pickleball, basketball, tennis, whatever, you know, to allow people to use those parks longer.
Yeah.
You know, there, when the high school was here a couple of weeks ago, talking about their project, I think getting with them, getting with Loyal SOC to see what type of lighting systems they're utilizing with timers and that sort of thing.
Yes.
Something I would like to, to at least see heading in that direction. So, yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, and not to speak for Bill and Scott, but one of our goals with the, you know, park plan that will come out is some uniform thing across the parks, right? So when we do, like, we're working on Elm Park right now. I didn't see anything in initial plans about new signage for Elm Park. So we want to have some certain things that come out of this plan that are uniform for all the parks so that when we do touch a park, whether or not it's with DCNR money or CDBG money, we're looking at all of the things, right? We're looking at, do we do lights? Do we do bathroom? Do we do signage? Do we do? You know, so we're kind of going to have like a checklist of all the things that we've mutually agreed upon, you know, that we should be considering in our parks so that when we're using grant funds to strategically upgrade them, we're not missing anything.
Microphone.
I would agree, John, that we, that we've done a fair amount in our parks. I do think that we need, I mean, to be honest, we need to deal with some nuts and bolts stuff, like touching all the parks because we're going to need new equipment in, in, I think, three or four of them in the next five years, probably, which is a huge expense. I mean, that'll be about $2 million bucks, I think, by the time we're done. But, John, we do, the interesting thing to me is that we actually do have bathrooms in a number of our parks. We just don't allow access to them currently. So that puts us in a good position to make that a reality, but part of that is figuring out the access question, is figuring out an ability to, figuring out a plan so that they, we keep them safe, they don't become a place where people are staying in a pinch, you know? And we either, we deal with the question of whether to winterize them or not. When you're talking about, my understanding would be that by ordinance, most of our parks currently are designated as closing at sundown. Is that accurate? Yeah. So when you want to add lights, are we talking about also in playgrounds? Like, are we thinking about going back on that concept of a closing time for parks?
Well, I guess we would have to. But yes, I, I mean, I think especially in the summertime. Yeah, if we have lights, adequate lighting, there's no reason people can't be in the parks till nine or 10 o'clock at night.
Well, in the summer, they can be there anyway because there's sunlight, but the,
Well, but.
But in the wintertime is actually the, kind of, where the question, I guess, are we closing them at four or are we, you know, using lights to?
I mean, those are all discussions that we need to have, but yes.
Anyway, yeah, I would agree that that parks need to be the focus of any kind of quality of life improvements in Williamsport, and that seems to be partly like what you're talking about. I mean, economic development is in the end partly geared toward quality of life, keeping people here, building businesses. All of those things are inherently tied together. The one question I had, did I understand on, at Monday's meeting that we had gotten a grant for a bicycle connector to Miller's Run?
So last year, in the budget session, you had, you had proposed potential bike lanes.
Right, yeah, throughout the city, right.
Yeah, throughout the city. So we, I wish Scott Williams was here to talk about this because this is his baby. But we have been pursuing that, so we're going to have, and actually, Bill Scott has been intimately involved in this, so he could answer way more questions than I could, but we're going to have a connector between Brandon and Shaw. And then we are also going to have a connector, we've been working with UPMC in the process of getting an MOU together with Loyal SOC, if I understand that correctly, Bill. And we will have that connector there from Shaw through the UPMC campus and then into Loyal SOC. So we'll be paying for the portion of it that's in the city, and then they'll be handling the portion that's in Loyal SOC.
I think that was actually largely my question.
Yeah. And we are using CDBG funds, so it's very specific, you know, right to city line.
Right, well, yeah, I wasn't trying to be uncharitable, but there was a little piece in my head on Monday that screamed, wait a second.
Maintaining compliance on that one, Lee.
Well, we need to provide bike access for the, for the constituents of Williamsport, to the asset that we have, to my mind first, so.
Yeah.
But I'm excited to hear that we're beginning to implement bike lanes and hoping that we'll be working on that going forward.
Yeah, we're excited about that project.
Yeah. Valerie, your, your plans for '26 sound ambitious. But that's exciting, and I think it's exciting for us to finally see, maybe I speak just for myself, but real activity in the, in the Department of Community and Economic Development that aims to look beyond usage of existing HUD funding and to utilize city dollars to ideally promote the city. I would add, just for the sake of adding it, that I think a transition to Home Rule will make a lot of those things that you're dreaming about doing a whole lot easier for the department. So I would continue to advocate for that. Not only will it give us perhaps a bit more matching funding for grants that we might seek for economic development in the city, but I think it would also provide a little bit more opportunity for the city to outline economic development as a crux of its mission within a Home Rule charter. And, and I think that that could, that could do a lot for our ability to seek grant funding and achieve it, knowing that that was something that was, that was a strong focus of the, of the city's community development department. Thanks, Valerie, and everyone.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Everything you've done has been wonderful so far.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the hard work that you put into it.
Thank you, and we appreciate your support of our department and our initiatives when we bring them forward. We appreciate your support and trust in us. So thank you.
All right, we will move on then to the Department of Public Works. Page number, please.
Thirty-five.
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 I'm sorry, Mr. Livermore, did you say you didn't receive a book?
But we're glad to see you economizing on city supplies.
Yeah, he can go without, that's fine.
So what I give you is the proposed 2026 budget for Public Works. The Office of Directors, we are currently proposing a 0.96% increase for the 2026. Some of the major factors there would be 2% increase for ATWILs, bring that up a little bit. I know we saved some money in, well, what's good, the higher increase of operating costs for City Hall, that's up $13,613. Is there any questions in the Office of Directors?
I have one. Mr. Livermore, it looks like your health insurance actually went, was decreased? Am I seeing that correctly?
It's just because of a change in coverage in one of the people in the department.
Okay, got you.
Jamie's just trying to make Scott look good in English.
Money's got there enough.
Can I ask the office rent, Jamie? I'm assuming that the, the $24,000 reduction in office rent actually just means that the rent allocation is different across the rest.
The deed was transferred.
Oh, okay, so we actually are not, we have a difference in how much we're laying out for the facility.
We did put some of that into facility maintenance for the building, but not the whole thing.
Okay.
Just, there was a little bit of reduction, but yeah.
Okay.
The office rent went away.
Okay, all right. So that actually was a change, not just a misreporting from last year. Great.
Good, moving on. Streets and Traffic Department or Control, we are down 7.36% in that. One of the big contributors there was street resurfacing, we cut down to zero this year, and Brick Street's down to zero this year. So that's a savings of $200,000. The reason for that is obviously we're trying to cut costs, you know, we're an issue, so I chose to pull that out of my streets paving list. The reason I able to do so is Valerie, the CPG department, had given me a little bit extra money this year, so for my 2026 paving budget, I'm still going to be in about a $1 million mark where we normally been. So I was able to pull that money out of those two line items to get through next year. Any questions on that?
In, in terms of our bridge, in terms of that bridge that we, I don't, you weren't here on Monday, were you, Scott? Okay, we spent a bunch of time talking about the bridge budget that runs for two years until we ideally implement one of the recommendations from PFM, like Home Rule, that puts us in a better financial position as a community. How are we bridging the second year of paving?
That's, so I got to look into that. So there's a couple of things that I cut this year, and we can get into that a little bit later, but that's going to go on to Act 13. I took out some money there, so I have $100,000 out of that, $350,000 out of my liquid fuels, and I think we're ready to round to $600,000 mark out of CPG next year. I got to chat with her to see.
I spoke to Valerie, she can do more than twenty-seven.
Okay.
That, that gap still.
I mean, I'm not, not that we've ever maybe kept up with paving the way that we would like to in the city, but it probably wouldn't be a horrible thing for it to take a hit two years in a row if we knew that we could come back strong in year three, but just
Right, and that's the thing.
Make sure that we have some kind of plan for that.
Yes, the city will take a hit.
Okay.
Luckily, I'm getting extra money from her that we can help bridge that gap till we get back to where we need to be. So they're the reason for them big cuts there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mackey?
Scott, and we talked briefly about this offline, but just so it's on the record. Again, this, this past First Friday season, I know I kind of started the initiative to get the barricades down there, and I know now you're going after these, these bollards that will kind of encompass, you know, encapsulate the entire downtown for events like that. But do, do we think it's necessary, until we know for sure when those will be installed, that we, because you, you clearly won the contest of cutting the most out of the budget, right?
Right, yeah.
So can we, can we, and where would it make most sense to maybe add some money back in that's specifically for the time that it takes to set up these barricades? Because again, this is something that we can't pick and choose. We have to, if there are events taking place on city property, we need to protect them. So I think some conversations between now and the next meeting on where best to put that money, and can we actually specify a certain amount of overtime for just, like, can you say currently the overtime budget's at 60,000? If we said the overtime budget was 75, but 15 of that is specifically for placing barricades at special events that I believe it's our responsibility to protect? Are you allowed to quantify overtime and like that?
We, we don't usually do that. I will say, though, his overtime is usually, in the Streets Department, usually has an excess. Like, if you look at the current year, it looks like that he would have about 15,000 available for use in the Streets Department. So I feel like there's prob, I mean, this is more of a Scott question on that part, but, but in, in the past years, he's had probably about enough that you're looking for that would probably be able to cover it, but he, I mean.
Right, so.
Because you said it was about 13,000 this year, but we didn't, we weren't at every event, so I'm talking like.
Yeah, that's one event, 13,000.
Oh, 13 for one event? Okay, so.
If, if we went with water barricades through the whole First Friday, so we cut it down and minimized down to five guys with just all vehicles.
And that, and that, that's just as effective.
So, and, you know, after talking earlier, I think, and I can chat with her about it as well, is putting it into the overtime, yes, we don't use all of it, but this is also taking care of what if that blizzard hits? That's where we, we normally
Sure.
end up with, looks like we're going to end up with about $15,000. But, like I said, I don't know what's going to happen between now and Christmas. I could burn that up, but that's where potentially, and I could chat with her if that could be, I can come up with a number for First Fridays and get a number in there to increase that line item potentially.
And again, it's not just First Fridays, it's parades, it's stuff happening at Brandon Park, it's stuff happening at Brandon Park, whatever it might be. When we're having an event on city property, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like we have a responsibility to protect the people that are attending that event to the best of our ability, and that's not with wooden barriers. That's with trucks, water barriers, bollards, whatever, you know?
Right.
Has to be something that's going to stop a bad actor, so. So I don't know, we, I guess we need to talk.
Yeah.
How many events are there?
That's going to be, I'll have to look at the 2026 year, I'll have to get with Sean and see what we have coming up.
Right.
And then try to calculate the overtime costs
Yeah.
for every event in order to see where we're going to be at, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, because we don't have enough money, it's not a valid excuse to not do this type of stuff. So we need to make sure that there's money to do it. And if that means adding money back into your budget, then that's what we need to do, so.
John, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Since you work in emergency management, have, have you seen communities that are figuring out how to do this more inexpensively?
I mean, there's all, there, there are all sorts of devices out there. They, they went with bollards that they're putting directly into the, but there are more mobile
Yeah.
devices that can be used. You know, when we had the ARPA money and we, and we bought the water barriers, I, I found these retractable metal, and they're kind of shaped in a J that stop, can stop a six-wheel truck that weighs a million pounds, but we didn't go with those. We went with water barriers, and that's, that was the decision that was made, and that's fine, but yeah, there are all sorts of options out there that cost all sorts of different kinds of money.
Yeah, and that's, so what I did in this instance with the, the bollards were, wanted to go with, I looked at as, yes, it's a possibly a $300,000, $350,000 investment, however, it's going to pay for itself in the long term because I don't need as many people
Right, right, right.
to put these out.
Yeah.
Or have a place to store.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I think bollards are definitely the way to go, as long as they will hold up longer term, which is why I was concerned about retractable bollards there for a sec. But I guess what I'm asking is, since John kind of works in the sphere, if he comes up, if, if there's a community that's managing to save a huge amount of manpower and money on something, you know, like on some sort of new technology, we should, you know, we should keep our ear to the ground because it seems like something that is, I mean, while I both agree with you, John, that we can't afford to sacrifice public safety on this one, I don't know how the hell communities are affording it over and over, you know what I mean? Especially communities that have, I mean, we are fortunate that the vast majority of our events are happening on Fourth Street, right? And so we can do something to kind of specifically limit access to just that area, but if you had street closures all over the community, like, I mean, it would just be this fantastic expense all the time. And, and it doesn't seem fair to expect a nonprofit to foot the bill for something like that, right? But on the other hand, our community also can't foot the bill for it, so there has, it seems to me that there has to be a way that other places are doing it. And so what I'm saying is, if you're already kind of interacting with that world, keep an eye out for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody's getting it on the cheap and we just haven't caught on yet.
And then, and we're getting kind of off the budget here, but there is a, an element of organization and coordination with this type of thing, too, right? We, we don't, we've got an emergency management coordinator, we've got a chief of police, we've got a rec, a rec director, but who is it that is coordinating all of these events to make sure that they're safe? Some, I mean, the, the name of that person is the Public Safety Director, but we don't have one of those. Should we consider in the future maybe a part-time Public Safety Director? I don't, I, I mean, I would say yes, but so, again, we're, we're kind of getting into the weeds here a little bit, but.
No, you know, not, you know, to kick, you know, still to add on to that. I think we're in a good place. We, we started the process, we got the water barricades, we're thinking of new ideas to try to make it safe. We can't get everything at once, right? So, but, you know, we take, it takes time and, you know, time and money, and we don't have a whole lot of it, but we do the best we can with what we got, and eventually we will get there. It's just going to take a little bit of time.
I have full confidence that you will, yeah. And, you know, the work that, that you're, you're. I, I have full confidence that you will. Yeah. Um, and you know, the work that, that your, your, your folks did uh, at this first Friday was, was great. The, you know, being willing to be down there on a Friday night. I mean, the first, the first night we did it, it was raining. I was down there talking to all of them. Saying thanks for being here. I mean, I, I know they're getting paid, but still. There's a sac, there's a level of sacrifice there. So I, thank you um, for doing that because it's important.
To follow up on that with something that's, that is also not entirely budget related, but per John's point about somebody to coordinate some of these things. I, uh, I happened to get an earful from a business that's in those, those blocks that we've been working on on East Fourth Street this morning. Do we have someone, should we have someone in charge of notifying businesses when we're doing work in their block and when we'll be closing the street or?
So what we've done recently, we got something coming up down by the pub that's we had Bill send it to like Spike to try to get it out there that things will be changing down there. We're getting wrapping that project up. Um, we try to, you know, we get it to the mayor to try to get it out on his platform and stuff, um, and utilize that. I don't know, I know.
Out specifically to like impacted property owners in a given block or anything?
Well, I know this year, Hallbakers did hand deliver wherever they were at, they gave notices when they, you know, the the timeframe they were gonna come.
Okay, but not got it cuz yes, this, yeah, that, this person was irate. But anyway, so we do try to do some of that.
Right.
Okay, um, but there's not like a specific point person in charge of making sure that we communicate. I mean, I, frankly, when they asked me, I was, I just wasn't.
We can do what we can do on the public work side of things as far as like water authority or UGI, I don't have any control what they do.
Yeah, well, and when we're working with a third party, that makes it more difficult too. But I guess that's what I'm trying to, I guess what I was kind of hearing from you, John, is that maybe it would be good to have someone who was designated as an interactive person for maybe not public safety so much as interactive for any kind of thing like that. Um, within the department.
I was just gonna say the contractors are supposed to literally go door to door, notify people of upcoming work and coordinate with like, you know, the pub, the suns, down things like that.
Theoretically part of our contract with.
It is. That is, that is usually part of specification and contract for um, coordination with um, the public, yes.
Alright.
To maintain access, you know, for emergencies and just to keep your business open.
Right, right.
You know, day to day.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, you can't make everybody happy, but um, just asking because as long as we were talking about coordination and how to make that step of reality, it seems as though maybe a public facing something would be good to look for in the future in streets and parks so that we can talk about all the closures and all the, right, that we have coming down the pike. But um, thank you. That, yeah, that, that was no big thing. I just figured I'd ask as long as we were already talking about it. Thank you.
Moving on.
Moving on then.
Uh, flood control. Uh, this is pretty lean and mean department we got. We're down point four eight percent. I mean, there ain't a whole lot in this department other than the two guys that take care of the levees as much as they can. Any questions in the flood?
The question I have about flood control. We still take care of that section of Miller's run there over in Loyal Sock for Loyal Sock Township, and they just reimburse us for the cost of that.
Yep.
Alright. And, and do we need, is that a yearly renewal?
Um, it is yearly, yes. Yep. I think the last I, I did a ten year agreement with them.
Okay.
Every year, I, I don't have the numbers. I know it's, it's an increase of like a percent or two every, for the next ten years. I, I don't know that for sure, but I know I increased it every year for a little bit for the next ten years. To cover the fuel costs and the maintenance and stuff for our equipment.
Any other questions about flood control?
Moving on.
Moving on to parks.
Parks. Um, we are up point eight two percent in parks.
Page number?
Pardon me?
Page number?
Forty-one, sorry. Uh, yeah, so Parks Department is up point eight two percent. Right now, we got five people in that department to take care of all of our parks mowing. Not a whole lot there other than the two, you know. So yeah, there's any questions in the parks?
Um, a- all of these capital projects reductions are nothing that we are really gonna miss, right? I just know it, it seems as though equipment within the Parks Department. I, oh, I said, all, all of the capital projects reductions within your department are things that we're pretty sure we can stand to postpone for a year. Yeah. Okay, alright.
Yep.
Just I, I know how heavily uh, equipment dependent your department is in particular, so.
Nope.
Um, alright. That's it, that's all for that.
Moving on then.
I'm gonna bring Sean up, the recreation coordinator to take care of recreation.
Uh, page forty-eight, please. Uh, good evening, council, councilman, councilwoman. Forty, yeah. Page forty-one, did I say that?
My bad.
Uh, far as under recreation, uh, we took uh, an increase of two point eighteen percent um, in recreation. Um, likewise, not a lot of things there. There was some decreases, but some also increases um, in that online item. Any questions about that?
Do we have any specific projects or any bigger projects that are gonna be coming up for the pool, Memorial Park that we need to be aware of? I know we recreate, we replaced scum guards and a couple of other things over the past couple of years. We redid the chemical system if I recall correctly. So we should be good there at this point, but anything that we should be aware of?
Yes, I want to say yes. Um, I think the next big ticket item is gonna be the scum gutters. That was told to us when we had it pressure tested that we had four to five years with that system left and um, but I can't guarantee anything obviously, but yes, most of the ticket items, the liner, the brand new pump, that's all installed, everything's running great with it. That we should be good for a long time with that. That just like I said, the next big thing is gonna be the scum gutters. It's gonna need replaced, so.
Liz.
I, while, while Gordon from PFM did not cite a specific thing that he thought within the city's recreation program um, needed to go, I got the impression because he mentioned scum gutters that he might have been thinking of the pool. Do we have like a point with the pool where we're gonna say like, eh, you know, like, like, like the point you get to with your car? Where you're like, okay, two thousand bucks and a new transmission, uh-uh, like I'm out of here, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna trade this thing in on something else. Do, does the administration, have we outlined a point where we decide that we're not putting more money into a pool and we're gonna put in a splash pad or something and cut our losses or?
Well, we haven't discussed that, you know, to come up with a when's enough enough, I guess?
Yeah.
What you're saying, um, not at this time. I mean, I guess if you're asking me, I, I, I see it projected a little while longer. I mean, we just dumped seven hundred or two hundred and seventy thousand in the filter. I don't wanna be like closing the next five years, obviously, but yeah, I mean, I get your point. Um, we did sink a lot of money in this in the last four years since I've been here uh, with liner and filter, so.
And a million into it not that long before to renovate, almost two, I think, to renovate the whole pool and completely rebuild it. Yeah.
So, but no, we haven't had those discussions on that yet.
Okay, I mean, pools are a net loser and everybody knows that. And the idea is that it's something that you do for the community, but increasingly, it seems as though, I mean, we still have, and we have one pool in Williamsburg, there's one in Loyal Sock. Is, is there one in Torresville? There is, sure. Yeah, anyway, what's that? Um, and I'm not, that's not me saying that we should get rid of it, but that is me saying that frankly, that I wish we had a county recreation authority that dealt with things like this specifically because we only need so many within the county and it's not clear to me that we need to have one, and Loyal Sock needs to have one. Um, I happen to think our pool is awesome. My children think it's even more awesome than I do. Um, but that doesn't mean that it's the best way for us to use resources long term. So um, I, I would encourage us maybe to develop some sort of a long-term plan for like when X goes, that's it, we're, we're figuring out another strategy. Um, I don't know, has anybody else on council, has anybody else thought about the pool as something that whether we should be retaining it or cashing it in at some point? Um, I just, we spent a long time debating it. Randy probably remembers when we, when we when we went down from three pools in the city to one pool in the city. But uh, I'm, I'm just still not sure in the long term that even one pool is something that, that we'll need.
We, we were definitely the outlier in the area because everybody else was shutting their pools down except for Loyal Sock. So.
Hey, guys, remember we do have this, we do have the splash pad to, you know, for, for the kids to enjoy.
Yeah, I mean, I, nobody's talking about decommissioning the pool, you know, like, like Scott said, in the next five years. I'm just encouraging us, I think, to, to look like you would look at, you know, your car at sort of a breaking point sort of thing where we just where we determine that we're either calling it or we're, we're all in for another fifteen years or something. Cuz I think uh, that is something that stands to be a significant drag on us moving forward. And if, if we can utilize that if we can, I think the example Gordon used was if we can implement a parks program at another city park, or we can buy new scum gutters, then maybe we should look at the number of kids we can serve with, you know, another parks program instead. Um, and I think that's a perfectly valid point. Uh, so, um, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Sean, in terms of um, other things we could use in our recreation programming that might do as much good within the community as the pool or not, but.
Oh, there's a ton of things that we could do. Um, but just like what Scott just said, kind of wanna fill things out, see how things go, especially with attendance. Being at that pool this year and last year, um, see if things start picking back up. But definitely there's, you know, some other promise to it, maybe recreating another splash pad. Somewhere else within the city. Um, but also some, you know, some different things within the city, within our parks. Um, to add more attraction to them also.
Okay. Um, I think may, maybe it might be, well, um, we've done a bit of a global recreation plan for the city. Yeah, Valerie? Um, so we can maybe start working on looking at that and, and looking at the pool within that, within the scope of that and kind of, yeah. Okay, awesome.
I mean, we got some wonderful things on the way. I mean, we have the bike park that's getting ready to pop. We have um, um, Elm that's getting redone. We have uh, Young's Woods is probably next year getting redone. The tennis courts at Elm are getting repaid right now. Uh, so some things are happening within our facilities and our parks right now.
Oh, yeah.
Are we doing any kind of census on these parks and these new facilities that we're putting in, just going out, spot checking, like splash pads is a great example? We spent a lot of money to put that in. And I, I, when I drive by in the summertime, uh, you know, you see people there, but are we doing anything that's giving us any good hard data on the usage of these um, new amenities?
Not to my knowledge, we are not.
Because obviously we want to make sure we're, we want people to enjoy where they live, and that's one of the most important things that we can do. But are we putting the right amenities in those uh, communities?
I don't have the necessary data, but I can tell you physically, we get a lot of more people at the splash pad than we do at the pool on certain weeks. Um, they're really taken to that. And that's just, that's even gonna enhance when that bike pack uh, park over there. That's really gonna make things open up.
Yeah. I mean, I think I think nothing beats free sometimes if you're not sure whether your kids are gonna wanna play for ten minutes or for two hours. So that, that, that might be part of that. But uh, well, good, um, the, uh, um, as far as um, how, how many recreation programs are we, are we only operating one in Brandon at this point? In terms of the summer rec program for kids?
We just have one of Memorial. The vision, we would love to get one started somewhere else. Um, budget wise, we don't have it to open up another park. I mean, there's summer camp program.
Have we ever approached like the foundation or something like that to maybe help sponsor?
I have not.
I, that, that seems like something we might be able to pull together to get ourselves a second program. Is there demand for it? I mean, are we turning away kids at the programming that we have?
Um, a lot of kids that we get at Memorial Park, they're from a vast amount of area. I mean, they're from East End. They're from up north, they're coming across the bridge from south. Um, so we get a lot of them from different ways, but I know with me stepping into the position, they closed Brandon because there wasn't nothing there. There was no
Nothing for the kids to play on.
People, well, our, our people didn't wanna come there. So at one point in time, they even tried to bus kids from Brandon to Memorial Park.
Got it.
So they could attend the summer camp. Um, and that didn't.
And we've, we've never run one at Shaw Place, right?
Huh?
We've never run one at Shaw Place?
No, we haven't.
Alright.
That was one of the places that me and Derek talked about, the mayor, we talked about, is maybe opening up one there.
Okay.
Um, because of Michael Ross in that, you know, area right there.
Yeah.
Possibly open up one there, but like again, with our budgets right now, it just doesn't work, especially with staffing.
Well, it's, it seems to me as though if we have the infrastructure to support one parks program, then the funding for the second one would be less, which might mean that we could manage to find some sort of small amount of funding. At least to pilot it for a year or two and then hopefully be able to fund it ourselves moving forward. Um, I, yeah, just a thought, um, cuz it would be, uh, I have had people asking me if we're planning to amplify that programming and I, those people may or may not know of increased demand that we're not aware of, but I think it wouldn't hurt to try to increase access and see whether or not, especially Shaw has like, that building is completely covered, right? So it could be a rain or shine program there. No community.
It's, it's different because the house is set up inside.
Okay.
So there's not like a very big room in there where everybody can go in.
Okay.
It's still like a pool house.
Right.
So it's in sections.
Okay, got it. Okay.
The last question I have is just, something that sticks out here is chemicals. We're over by almost ten thousand dollars. I mean, it's nine, nine thousand dollars thirty-three. But what is the reason that we're over that much and we didn't budget that well year over year?
So the splash pad obviously wasn't accurately, possibly on my part, wasn't accurately on how much it was gonna take.
Okay.
The, and then the other thing is too, and talking to the chemical companies, it depends on the summer you got. You got a lot of sun and chews through chlorine like crazy. The pool, you know, I think we have on hand anywhere from seven hundred gallons. We burn through that about a week. On a good hot summer day, or week, it'll burn through about seven hundred gallons. So there was some increasing cost in chemicals into that. Um, the splash pad only has two thirty gallon tanks. That don't use as much cuz it's not as out as in the sun as much, but it's still, you know, it's, it's something we gotta keep up with. And that, that's just the chemicals involved with is um, uh, chlorine and hypo or um, muriatic acid is what we use to bound, get it balanced out. I did switch the pool over to muriatic acid this year, which helped a lot on stabilizing it, keeping it more uh, level. And pass, we use uh, uh, CO2.
CO2?
Yeah. Um, to do, and that's just seemed to be, it was every three days we're changing tanks out. So um, I switched that over, that which probably increased it a little bit more, but it made the pool a little bit more safer for us to handle and it was easier to manage that way.
Yes, Randy?
It, this isn't a big item, but um, I've noticed that the advertising um, component has gone down from five thousand then to three thousand and now it'll be down to one thousand. Um, one thousand dollars, is that correct? I just wonder, um, is that essential to getting the word out on uh, our activities or do we use other?
Well, yeah, and I use other platforms, you know, like Facebook, things like that to get it out. Um, far as this year, it was, you know, we had the free access to the mayor's billboard over here on market. So we have some things where we can get those out. Even though that decrease is happening, it's just being more and I say smarter, but more just using more of the free entities around here, you know, to get things out. There's a church in Newberry, I guess they put out a kind of like a web weekly.
Yeah.
You know, to the community, we can get stuff out through them also.
Okay, just thank you.
Overall recreation, uh, twenty twenty-five, we had a good season. We actually added three new events. We had a movie at the pool. Um, and we also had a glow party at the pool this year. And at Shaw, we did the haunted house, which we just finished that up, which was well attended. Um, so we're still adding some things, not just kind of staying in the mud, you know, we're adding some new things. Um, especially for different communities, but also some people that can't make it out. We're trying to be more creative and get more things out for the community.
Eric, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Bonnie.
Sean, uh, is it true that we're going to have a, a Christmas festival instead of a parade?
So yes, the, the parade is no longer happening uh, due to bad weather, but also poor attendance. Um, right now we are collaborating with the German market. Far as recreation, we'll do a kid piece to the German market this year. Um, to kind of work with them and build in that um, celebration bigger.
You are gonna have Santa come to town, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna be Santa, Bonnie.
Oh, okay, terrific.
Doc, Austin didn't know that. Now, now he can just ruin Christmas for Austin. Liz?
Um, yeah, the, the one, the one request that I hear probably more than anything in terms of rec programming is um, the concerts in the park. Is that on the agenda for next year?
Yes, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep that on the, uh, on the agenda. Uh, far as this year. Um, the feedback that I got, you know, whether online, on phone or on foot, which I did a lot this summer. Um, a lot of these bands rather play in a nearby bar than come to the band show. Um, however, we've had two Christian events at Brandon Park this year, which was well attended. It was packed.
If, if you, if you need help locating bands, I can do that for you.
Okay.
Um, that won't be a problem. I can, I can book the venue if we, you know, if you can give me, uh, if you can just let me know sort of what the parameters are. I would encourage us to consider using um, Wade's Garden as well, just because that's, it's, it's two different areas in the city. You get two different crowds. Um, also, you know, I think that it would be a nice thing for the historic district and it'd be, but, but anyway, um, I can, uh, I am certain that we can find groups that wouldn't mind performing in the, um, in the park. If uh, if you want to give me a call, we can put a list together of kind of what you're after.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm not exactly sure what the city's parameters are. I'm gonna go ahead and assume that probably foul language is off the table. Um,
Yeah, yeah, no hardcore rap or anything like.
Yeah. Uh, but, but I'm sure, I mean, we, we don't uh, host live music at my restaurant, but I certainly know an awful lot of people who do, and I'm sure that we can work our connections and find people who would do an, an outdoor performance as a community thing.
Yes, yes, we can definitely get together. Again, like I said, the Christian concerts that were there this year, um, they'll probably come back next year. Um, well attended, every park, every road in that park was jammed full, far as parking. Um, so like I said, they were well attended.
Yeah, I think the events are well attended. It's just a matter of getting the word out and then, right, making sure you have the event. Yeah. And so, um, yeah, I think we should try to make that a priority because that, it really makes the, the parks feel lively, I think, and it's such a nice thing for kids and families to go to, so.
Well, that's one of the things on the agenda to boost up homemade days far as next year.
Okay.
I'm gonna add a kid piece to it, but I'd love to get music back to that, as far as those two days.
Um, I think, I mean, if, I can't speak for all the members of council, I, I would appreciate if there are recreation goals and or recreation plan that we have in place moving into twenty-six, like things that we'd like to see happen. Um, it would be great, um, if you wanted to sort of write some of that stuff down. And then if there were things that you needed help with, I know historically speaking, um, the parks commissions, but also members of council have helped with some of that stuff. It depends a bit on our work schedules, et cetera, but um, I can certainly, um, finding bands is something I can do in my off hours, so I can certainly help with something like that. We can make Randy go out and, you know, do the hard work.
Mr. Mackey?
I was just curious, wh- what is the, the overarching feedback you're getting from the performers as to why they don't want to come to the band show?
Um, I mean, to me, it was mind boggling because, I mean, we have a budget established for it, you know, that we can actually pay these bands. Um, but I don't know if it's because of past discussions of what the band show looked like and how it didn't operate and the electronics weren't up to date or things like that, but it was just a sense, I'd rather go down to Pine Square and play down there than come out to the band show.
Yeah.
Or I'd rather go inside, you know, one of the bars and just play, um, certain hours there instead of coming to the band show. And I, I, when I spoke with them, that's what I said, listen, not to try to really sell it like that, but I mean, I can pay you.
Right.
You know, as far as it come out perform.
Well, I, I also wonder if it's the, the time of day, um, because I have been, I mean, not recently, but to a few of those concerts and at time of day that we're doing them, the sun is just pounding down on these performers. So this comes back to the, maybe starting a little bit later, getting some lighting in there on the band show so that we can do these things later in the evening, maybe that they're not getting pounded by the sun for two hours, because I, I'm sure that's not fun. So I don't know, maybe the time of day that we're doing it could be looked at as a way to entice more people to come.
Yeah, because I try to keep in mind the neighborhood around it. So I don't want to go too late, you know? Cause then we will have that discussion, why are things going on that late? But that's a good point. Yep.
Moving on then, um, we have other?
Uh, yeah, moving on. I noticed on the agenda, I didn't see engineering. I don't know if we want to throw that in the others.
He's in.
Where, oh.
It's the next category.
Uh, yeah, others, whatever.
I think we covered all the other.
Yeah, I gotta find it way back here. Page number twenty-five. Um, I'm a whole lot here, up two point four six percent. Well, it's due to the increase of the salaries and I believe a little bit of insurance, insurance costs increased. Any questions on engineering?
Seeing, hearing no questions on that, we'll move on then to the miscellaneous funds and budget. Or excuse me, engineer, skipped one. Engineer and engineering are two separate things.
So moving on liquid fuels?
We can do that. It's not listed here, so move on to it, please.
Already said engineering.
Yeah. Yeah.
Engineering's good. Okay, moving. Liquid fuels, page fifty-seven.
There's an engineering. We can go back if I need to.
Engineer and engineering are the same, and he just went over that, just in case he has a question.
Yeah, I was doing this.
Good. Liquid. Page fifty-seven.
Yep. Um, so for twenty twenty-six, we are down six point seven three percent. Um, and a lot of the big one there, um, I think our estimated allocation for twenty-six is eight hundred seventeen thousand, some change. Uh, we are down, obviously, since I've been here, I think we almost reached a hundred thousand dollars cut since I've been here in twenty twenty-one. So every year it goes down. Um, and I think, I don't know why that is. I think it's due to population. I'm not really sure or what the deal is, but that's, we're eight seventeen for the twenty twenty-six year. Any questions on liquid fuels?
Liz?
How dependent would you describe us as being on liquid fuels funding to um, rebuild streets and purchase equipment? I mean, how much of, how much of our budget for streets and equipment does liquid fuels account?
So the streets, I usually like, I allocate three hundred fifty thousand for paving, um, every year out of that. Um, my equipment varies. Um, I did, I don't have anything slated to be bought really out of that. Maybe a skid steer this year, which is uh, right around the eighty-two thousand dollar mark, and I have two uh, loan payments I have to pay out. That equals up to about fifty-five thousand-ish.
But so, I, well, I guess what I'm asking is, compared to what you spend out of the general fund budget for items like this, um, how much, like, are we looking at liquid fuels as taking care of fifty percent of our equipment expenditures on an annual basis and fifty percent of our streets, it's more than fifty percent of streets. I know that, although it.
No, I, um, I don't, uh, the general fund takes care of quite a bit of my equipment and fortunate, you know, I've been fortunate the last couple of years, we got a lot of that taken care of, so we're good for quite a while on a lot of my pieces. Um, but the, like I said, maybe it right now, it's, it's just a two fifty thousand dollar a year payment for the two loans that I have. That's all that's coming out right now. The, I just ended last year, I think last year was my last year. I paid, I paid off my backhoe, that's done. So I only have two more things. It's my vehicle trucks.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Still, basically, if we were without it, it would probably about double the budget in your department, huh?
Right. It's, it's, it's gonna come to, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know the reason a hundred percent of why we keep getting decreased, but it's gonna come to a point, if it continues this, you know, I'm gonna have to start cutting into the paving budget and look for other ways of paving, you know, I, I'm hoping it goes the other direction, but you know, because the, the cost for my salt and cinders, I pay seventy-eight dollars a ton. Right now I just ordered about three hundred ton to fill my bins up and right there's twenty thousand dollars gone. So we're taking other measures and, you know, that department as well of trying to cut costs with salt, you know, we got uh, our equipment, you know, force equipment that we use, it's been calibrated, we're, we have units on it that tell us when it's turning on, turning off, so we're trying to save as much as we can there. Um, so, I mean, we're doing, we're gonna do what we can and hopefully I see a significant salt savings this year with this new equipment that we have on there. Um, but it's, things aren't getting cheaper and I'm getting less money, so it's getting a little bit more difficult. And I don't know, I don't want to know where it's gonna look like in five years.
And so you can talk to Valerie about that. Um, speaking of which, the person who might actually know exactly how your liquid fuels allocation is, is derived is Scott Williams, because he used to do transportation for the county. Um, so I would, maybe we could get with him, because if there's something we can do to change that metric, if it's not solely based on population or not solely based on fuel usage.
I heard road miles and population, and then I can't see, we lost any roads, so.
Got it, yeah. Um, anyway, if there's, if there's something that we, some sort of reporting that we could be doing that would drive the allocation back up, it wouldn't hurt to look into that. Um, but.
Um, back to the, excuse me, the, the liquid fuels for a second. Um, the county line is defunct, I guess.
What were, was this a twenty-six, twenty-six thousand? So there, there, well, yeah, now, so, so next year, uh, I'm gonna take the blame for this one. Um, they changed it, uh, so, um, Doc Grants changed the way you gotta do things. Uh, there was a application process that was missed by me. So I lost maybe twenty, between twenty-four and twenty-six thousand in that process. Um, that's something, so in the past, they just, they allocated it to you. Now I have to come up with a project. My fault, but it's, it's twenty-six thousand is not a lot, but it's still, it's enough.
Yeah.
You know?
Just don't pave in front of their buildings. Or plow snow or anything like that.
All right, I'll keep that in mind.
I just thought maybe they weren't gonna give us any more money.
No, no, it, we'll, we'll get, we'll, we'll receive another allocation twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So next year.
We'll, we'll definitely survive.
We'll get a project lined up next year and then it'll be, we'll get it back in twenty-seven.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on then?
Okay, I'm gonna do Act thirteen and Capitol Projects. Um, um, as you can see, Act thirteen, oh, I'm sorry, page sixty-one is Act thirteen. Um, as you can see in the projected revenue, Act thirteen is down um, thirty-nine percent. So we got about a hundred and seven thousand dollars less than we anticipated. Um, we don't have a way to know how much it is. We usually just, um, tried to look at the average over the last five years in order to predict that. Uh, we also took the interest income down because the interest rates are going down. Um, the projected expenses are down. Um, so we had some levy expenses last year. We had the, in twenty-five, we had some levy expenses that we did not anticipate. There were some projects that we didn't know that were still going on, so we don't have any other projects in twenty-six as far as we know, that will um, require any levy money. So that shows uh, decreased by ninety-three thousand. Um, Scott gave up, he took his um, paving from Act thirteen down from two fifty to a hundred in order for us to be able to accommodate the grants that we already had in action. Um, we needed some, we needed to make sure we had the matches for the grants that we already have going, like the pump track and Little League Boulevard, Green Light Go, um, and the remainder of the stamp program that we're working on. And then there was another um, Safe Streets. We have a grant match for that. And then the Basin Street Riverwalk Connector is um, in this, for twenty twenty-six, the match there too. So, um, as you can see, Act thirteen is going down. Every year there's, it's a lot less, so our um, availability in that is pretty slim. Uh, Liz, I did add that rollover page in the budget for you, roll forward page, it's page sixty-three. Um, you can see that the surplus after this usage is pretty low, so we didn't have a lot of um, excess for that, so.
Good thing we didn't make plans for the remaining uh, surplus from Young's Woods then.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we do, so that twenty-nine thousand would potentially be sufficient to match a state grant for home rule stuff, and that's really about what we got, right?
I mean, a little bit more. Yeah.
Yeah, some other random overage like that and we're done. Um, thank you. I appreciate the, the update. Um, and our estimate for twenty-six was three forty-seven. We do think we'll get that.
Um, that, I mean, that's the hope. I, it, I have no idea how they calculate it. I just know that we usually try to do a five-year average. Um, I mean, this year was down quite a bit, so.
Yeah, I was gonna. If it were me, guys, not to be a buzzkill, but I would say we should take that one down a little bit, because if we only got three twenty-nine this year, I've haven't seen a year and a minute where we got an increase in Act thirteen funding without an increase in drilling, and I've not heard about one of those happening next year.
Right.
Um.
I'm, I'm sure that's more driven by prices and market.
Right, and I think our market is down substantially right now for natural gas over else, elsewhere on the line. Um, yeah, don't know what that does to our bottom line, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to project income. We're not gonna get there. Um, in fact, I'm surprised Gordon let that one stand, but uh, okay. Um, well, yeah, we knew it was never really money we should be counting on, so I suppose there's no surprise there. Thanks, Jamie. So the administration is okay with us. Uh, in fact, maybe we could request from you, Jamie, a line in that Act thirteen budget for um, Home Rule Match.
Yeah, we can, we can.
There next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, um,
I'll write myself a note and.
Yeah, if you can add that, that would be good. Um, I mean, funding it.
Cause if we don't do it there, we'll have to find a line in general fund.
Right, right. Um, so I, I think I would assume fifteen thousand dollars should more than do it and hopefully.
Yeah, I feel like that's what Gordon said the other day.
Ten to fifteen, so if we put. Ten to fifteen. So if we put fifteen, then hopefully we have a bit of extra money at the end of the day. I believe if you guys put it in before, uh, December fourth, then we don't necessarily need to amend and all that stuff, right? So. But perhaps the other smart thing to do would be to take the remainder of that twenty nine thousand then and take it off.
Put it off the proposed.
Thirteen proposed for next year.
You want me to do both of those?
I think that would be the smartest thing. That would take us down closer to what we actually got.
Yep.
And, um, this year. So at least it's only maybe a seven thousand dollar difference if we fall short and if we fall shorter. Well, we'll, we'll deal with that when we deal with it, now won't we?
Any other questions about Act thirteen?
Okay, I'm gonna do Capitol Projects on page fifty two. Y'all know that we took Capitol Projects down this year and reduced the savings, so it looks, um, really different. So the revenue, uh, we just, we reduced the interest income. We've been doing that across the board, kind of, um, doing about eighty percent for interest income. We did add the sale of City Hall in, um, as we had it last year. The only cup, there is a Graffiti Run flood mitigation. This is funds that were allocated specifically to Graffiti Run that we've carried. Scott was able to use a little bit of that for Graffiti Run this year. I think he plans to try each year if he can use that money, um, to get that down. So we did keep a couple items in Capitol Projects. We kept the items that were supposed to be purchased in twenty six, which are um, a GMC Sierra for Parks and twenty seven for Parks. This Sierra, we had already had all the funds saved for that, so we didn't need to save anything from this year for that. Um, and then there's a Vent Trac for the Flood Department, so there's not a lot in, in there, but those were the purchases that were left in twenty twenty six.
Amuse me, please. What is Vent Trac?
What's a Vent Trac? It's a mower.
Just curious.
It's a special mower.
That is a very special mower. Any questions on Capitol Projects?
I did also notice that I did not put debt service in on the agenda. Would you like me to go over that quickly?
Would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, I just have to find it. Um, page fifty nine. So our debt service is always kind of self explanatory, but, um, so it's down point three six percent. I think the payments are just reducing just slightly. That, and I will just note the red marking on the top of the next page. So we discussed this last year. So on page sixty, there is a, um, red. That's just the Parking Authorities portion. I just keep adding another year to that, so.
So what you're telling me is we are paying on their debt currently?
Correct, yes. Pretty soon we're gonna have to, uh.
And they're holding about three million bucks worth of debt? Is that?
Um, I'd have to look. I'm not sure. It's, it's not a large payment a year. I want to say between thirty five and forty. Don't quote me on that, but it's, it's under fifty thousand dollars. It's not, it's not
Okay.
As substantial as our portion.
So theoretically, they're into us for about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes. We do still bill every year and we do send the past due billings.
I'm assuming this is partly based on a dispute between us and the Parking Authority about this debt that should be.
I think that there's been conversations about it. So I think, I think that they have all the documentation now that they need. I'm not sure where it's going from there, but they do have all the documentation that they need.
Okay, alright. And we are the primary lien holders if the Parking Authority defaults on that debt. So is that accurate?
That's correct.
My assumption is, and this may be wrong, the balloon payment to the FTA.
Oh, that's in the emergency fund. Do you want me to do that, um, now as well? That's, that's down at the, that's the last one.
Hold on that.
Okay.
We'll get to that piece then. Any other questions about debt service then? We'll see you in a few minutes.
Page share or page?
Okay. Uh, page fifty five. City Hall operating. We're up one point three percent. Uh, you can see the numbers there. It's increased over the maintenance over the last year. Really any questions on that?
Doesn't seem to be any.
Good evening, council members. Just a couple of brief words. Uh, over the last few years, Sean Bastian and I have been able to bring all the technology in the city very, very far forward. We have, um, completely revamped the entire network infrastructure, our connection to the outside world, the connection between all the facility buildings that we have. And, um, our security posture is phenomenal. Our security rating with Microsoft is fifty percent above the average. So we're doing good things. For my budget, there's approximately a twenty two percent increase. The biggest portion of this is us taking over the rest of Sean Bastian's salary and benefits that were previously paid by the police grant. Other than that, it's just the two percent increase for the salaries, just like everybody else is having. Purchasing the supplies for some new security systems is up about twenty five hundred dollars. And just an increase for connections to, uh, more of the city parks that we plan on bringing online. There's also the ad of the payroll and accounting software that now that the stamp has ended, we have to pick up the rest of that.
So I have a curiosity question.
Sure.
And it's been a hot button issue for a while now is where city operations were going to be located. From an IT perspective, what does that look like as far as time and whether it be operating time, downtime and so on? For you and Sean, should we decide to move into one facility? Should we decide to lease a facility? Anything like that?
If we were to stay within, first off, all of our servers are located up the streets and parks. We have a high speed connection back down to center city, where then it branches out to the other locations. If we were to, say, permanently occupy the building next door, we would have two people, we'd have to move over there to vacate this building. Nothing else need change. If we want, ideally, I would pick a weekend and move the servers from up there down here to be more centralized. And then maybe put redundant systems back up, up there. So if the does, the smoking crater does happen, and I do have things in place to take care of it, where we can be back up and running within two hours. But that would make it less than two hours.
Right. Just curious, that, that's a big piece of a move.
Big piece of the move, yeah.
Regardless of what it is we decide.
If we go to another facility, uh, separate building altogether, I would need to evaluate that building. To see what the infrastructure is like in there. You know, do we have to run new cabling throughout the buildings? Do we need to run new fiber? How do we get our internet connection moved from this building or I should say that building to that building?
Again, just curious. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions involving IT? Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Page fifty. Says the emergency fund. Interest income down, not surprising. Um, this is where the FTA payment is coming from. It, it, the final full balloon payment is due in March, I believe. Also, you see the twenty twenty four tax overage transfer back to the general fund as like we did in the previous year. We saw that in the general fund revenue coming in.
So my question about that FTA payment. Taking it from the, uh, from the emergency fund.
Correct.
Fine. We were presented with a potential option of exploring a bond for that. Was that something that you were ever directed to do?
I, I have not heard anything about a bond, no.
Okay. Just curious if that was ever something that was pursued.
Not, not that I know of.
Okay. Any other questions about emergency reserve?
No.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Last chance for any members of council. If there's something that you thought of, while we still have the attention of the administration sitting here patiently waiting. I hope nobody was confused tonight with the gentleman sitting to my right. He's, he has a striking resemblance to me. Um, I have better hair than him, I will say that. So do apologize if you were out there and got a little confused as to who was who. So.
Probably didn't help that we switched your name tags while you were here.
Then we'll go to, I remember three announcements. Uh, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting is Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five at seven PM, Train Transit Two here in this, uh, room. Upcoming meetings, again, Thursday, the city council meeting at seven PM, December fourth, and then Thursday, December eleventh, the last meeting of twenty twenty five at seven PM. And we need a motion for adjournment tonight, Austin? We do need a motion for adjournment, so.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.